All right, good evening. A little bit of a slow start here. It's seven twenty-two on October twenty- meeting to order. First item on agenda here, approval of minutes from September twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one.
Uh, so moved.
Motion to approve the minutes. We have second.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those present, others saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to adjourn. Do we want agenda ID meeting? We're not sure that many of them have had a committee report they wish to make at this time. At this time.
I'll set it for you.
All right. Is one, I don't know. Start, I guess, Mr. Patel. Just to note to the board.
Okay.
Perhaps, so, yeah, you want to just let-
Yeah, so, uh, at our last local office meeting, there was discussion about whether the board should continue. And it was a vote taken. And, um, we decided to follow the committee as it stood today. About a number of issues with the town and so forth. So, under the committee, right? Four members of the board resigned on that meeting. And it's up to the selectmen to, um, get someone to adjourn and want to continue. Four members of the board resigned. Aye.
All right. Here, committee reports. Town engineer report, we have nothing at this time. We'll be launching agenda ID three, seven twenty-five Main Street, Avenue, and Stevens and Barns. Everybody here for, uh, seven twenty-four?
General? The site is appropriate.
You can try it.
Hey, this is Jim and I have two programs representing the applicants at seven twenty-five Main Street. We've been here earlier. Meeting here. Then we have some issues to review. We didn't really satisfy all of those issues. There was also one issue that, uh, I think was a minor issue that the special permit was signed. It had a set time of thirteen feet. And because of the way the landscape became out, we had it to eleven feet. But if you call them within the permits, the main purpose of what we're doing with the sign was sort of get this site business. And so what the plan and the show of the site is, is exactly that. It was some kind of plan for proof. Just like asking them to take that into consideration. Everything else is, uh, constructed and approved according to the plan. And, uh, we've got the letter, the meeting, the letter from the government. Have it, uh, posted first, number one. The child being, uh, certainly one of the completely running down the line. From the county, yes. Saying that all of the issues on the side of the number that was mentioned, um, that are pleasing of the law and the subject of the group being the board.
All right. Questions? Discussions underway. Come on, set it. Let's do so.
Thank you.
All right. Questions? Discussions underway. Come on, set it. Let's do so. All right. Questions? Discussions underway. Come on, set it. Let's do so.
Well, yeah, discussed. We were remaining shrubbery and trees on the sidewalk. Keep that in mind after what I want to say. In what, uh, that people may take from that too. And about to take the way I want. Lots of things that-
This is an issue of tree byers, isn't it?
Yeah, so, for, it's only five of us, five, four, four, four. Um, and I said I'm not waiting for that back. I was like to submit a waiver for that thing. So, but that is our permit. So that's the AP.
What other? What other break down do you want?
Um, there are other AP, um-
You can see him with the photos.
So, I did have a copy of that.
So, let me talk around the room. Based on what looks like right now. If you wanted to cover the issue, I think you probably have to submit a non-essential change request. Okay. The tree kind, just so it covers it or plays it out as a part of all.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it will change by the time I go through the property.
Oh, otherwise, it just hangs out here. I don't find it. Just going to do the change request on the issue, right? We have a lot of holes to deal with. We need to wait for four, so it's just sort of hanging. We have the discussion.
My profession to me, the asset would not be an issue.
Good.
No, I know, I have the, the, I'm just trying to figure out how to address it.
Yeah, I think this is about the non-essential changes.
So. What's the difference?
Um-
I just want to, if we, uh, do want to wait for the AP, just to have the non-essential change request. Is that final?
That's fine, yeah. Yep. So, cycle of snark, that's it, I mean.
That way at least we can kind of, at least play the issue. So, motion to wait for the AP for the non-essential change. It's submitted and clear. So, right. Second. All right, so all the effects in my C time, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now, as to ask those exceptions to that, that's the issue honestly. Those other motions approved. Did I have a second before? So, a motion made in second, all those papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. As to the bottom east. Motion from ten thousand, all those papers. Second. Motion made in second. All those papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Again, so that's well. So, Ross.
Five, three, four, on these cards. That's okay.
Do a standing up. Uh, take care of it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to agenda ID four. So, everybody has that in hand. Does anybody have any specific date they know about this issue?
We were looking at the calendar just a few minutes ago. Saw that it was December. So, we thought to tell them the meeting up to Christmas. The nineteenth of August. That we could have it on the week before that. The cross that had gone away for two weeks. And got, uh, um, Thanksgiving, uh, left town. First week and a half. Excuse me. I got a hundred for Christmas. Yeah, we opened it up, so we pulled up the twelve.
Was this against the twelve?
Yes, yeah.
You gave your time and you shoot the twelve.
So, I'll input the numbers from the eighth that I got in charge of that ground.
Well, it'll be, uh, it's the end of the month, so you should do it. Okay, so then we have a motion to change the December meeting to December twelfth. So, motion made second. Motion made second, all those papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As to the meeting calendar, otherwise, your motion. So, move to the meeting calendar at that point to change. But second.
Okay.
Motion made second, all those papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. For the meeting calendar. Moving on to agenda ID C. Two seventy-eight Main Castle Drive, Main Street, fifth and third. Everybody here for two seventy-eight Main Castle Drive.
Please, if you keep up with the, uh, Mrs. Grant, we are proud of you this evening. If you have any questions, follow up with her. This is a, uh, the press, sorry, the family street at two seventy-eight Main Castle Drive. Uh, designed to the platform, showing the location of the post, vision to the center of the building. The forward position has nine hundred meters square near the family street. And has associated, uh, common area of the connections with the existing structure. The architect has designed it so that the, uh, main street has its own independent door. It's the common area of the door is not facing, uh, like that, that's facing sort of inside. So, it still has the appearance of a basic vision, which is what the, uh, the board and the city. We don't really anticipate that, uh, we understood that the, uh, the area is, it's a normal flying. That in the fourth edition is going on is, you know, the fact, um, it's, uh, modest size because the, uh, the common area is not outside of the main, uh, that, uh, I'm not understood. Which is, uh, pretty typical. Usually they're somewhere in that vicinity. Um, so basically, the, the main house, it is a two-story. The, uh, actually, it's, I guess, about a two-story, because it's split, uh, separated. And so we have, uh, shown on the right-hand side and the lower portion of the, uh, architectural plans from my cabinet. So, it shows the connection from the existing outlines of the family street. Pretty straightforward, I think. Yes, the addition of one story. With, uh, with the, uh, foundation and, uh, basically, uh, uh, like, uh, four foot crossface.
Yeah, four or five.
Four or five foot crossface, just so the premises are, uh, in the canyon.
So, Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. No questions per se. So, lights would be a couple. The French will be coming down. That's it?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, time's gone, you're going backwards. That small building you have back there, correct?
Yeah.
Right. Does that come from down through the building or staying on there?
Building.
Thanks. Good. Other than that, I'm all, I'm all set. Um, the bottom of the suite, it's a great avenue to have the family stay together and, um, keep a watchful eye on them. And, um, hope your works out. All set, man?
I'm going to take these shorts off, sir.
I know, hey, but it's-
Mr. Patel, if you asked one question, you take care of it. That's all done. It's on hand now.
Well, I'm not waiting to see if you guys could go, right?
It's in the lead.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Are you sure?
If you read the light, you can see it.
This is Paul?
That's Paul.
This is, uh, another six to a day. Uh, Mr. Jim, I'm all set. Complies the volume rules and, uh, works very nice. And, Mr. Delaney?
The, I want to see my, you know, the, uh, parking, driving. My question, something, it shows on the property. But basically, the main house has two back doors and then it's not going to pass.
Come on, set it.
Mr. Wright?
All set, Mr. Jim.
She does all set as well. Public areas of the regular yard, any questions, comments, or concerns? Sinema, could you back to the board? What's the pleasure of the board? Well, I'll just make the one note. I know, Mr. Jim, you did fill that, um, that sheet in regarding the provision. But we already made a vote. That's now a provision that would be in all the general permits and now on the board. So, I won't read it this time, right? It goes a lot back.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I go through it.
Okay. All right, motion closed, but second.
Second.
Motion made in second and all those papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. As to the family street special permit itself. Uh, the motion to approve is submitted in the second. All those papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, members. Delight?
Six, eight, nine, ten.
Moving on to agenda ID seventeen sixty-eight, seventeen eighty-eight, Main Street. Uh, lubrication, discussion, special permit, pushback of the company. Motion to wait for a break. Come on. If you made second, all the papers, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Okay, um, due any sudden consulting, uh, I have, uh, come on it. It's, uh, seventeen sixty-eight, means pretty good across. So, uh, I think we're finding requesting, uh, consideration for modification in special time. Uh, it was, uh, issued between, uh, two thousand and twelve and September, September twenty-first. So, uh, okay. So, we had, we took all the new design. Uh, this is the existing, uh, commercial building that has the pressures and times for, uh, tenant. Um, essentially, what we're trying to do is address some parking constraints that have been existed there for years. Uh, at the end of the day, the current parking that satisfies the, uh, demand that's provided there. Um, so this is our time to try to clean that up. And we just don't want to get out of here for most of this. So, uh, the last time this number three fire, what it handled was, uh, was two thousand and twelve. Uh, we went, it was modification, paint to the site, to walk toward the, uh, for the addition of this location here. What they are consulting in, all plus minus, putting a loss of plus minus twenty parking spaces, that's approved for the year. So, overlooking the design, uh, technically, is to adjust the end segment. Have two locations, one on the left, one on the right. Re-spread the entire parking lot. Um, that's going to give us twenty additional parking spaces. Not having any infirmity service in our, uh, that, uh, for this. So, moving to the sketch here, left-hand side, shift the, uh, end, the, approximately five feet to the west. That way, uh, to get the parking in the face of the, the, uh, parking, after that. Moving to the opposite, right-hand side. Uh, fortunately, uh, Mr. Wright also holds the, to the, uh, holding, uh, seventeen eighty-eight Main Street. Uh, so, we do, we do, we actually go over, uh, by about, uh, ten to twelve feet. Um, offset that, uh, and paid, and that allows us for the net increase in the, uh, of the net increase. Again, that allows us to put on, on the base of, again, here. And then by, uh, re-spread the, uh, portion of iron building that I presented. So, the other day, uh, we had twenty-one additional parking spaces. We will be required to provide cross-seamings to the parking that's on the eastern side. Um, uh, but we'll now get that twenty-one additional spaces. So, we have this game. So, then on the twenty-third, uh, counter, um, we, we received a, uh, a letter from, um, from, uh, Steve's app. Said, essentially, um, bring the land investment, provide the cross-seamings with the servant group. Um, also because we have weapons on site, we used to order a ton of the compensation commission last week. They hit us negative termination. We won't have to file any additional permits with them. Again, uh, don't can have any improvement in our purpose, as I said, with some of the, thirty-eight cents of this. Um, on October twenty-first, we have a review letter from DPD. It's a sum of what they're saying, that they basically have, have two, uh, comments on this. Uh, can you take this, the second for sidewalk, one-
The project frontage. Other than, um, asking you to consider the, the minimal adjustment, uh, that we're doing in the site to try to provide parking to offset the demand that they've had and that they've had for a long time. Um, the time and money that goes into that, the DOT filing that goes into that. Um, the other thing to be aware of is that the two thousand and twelve permit, two thousand and twelve permit, uh, allowed for the waiver. Um, so, uh, this is, this is item number five here. I'm just going to read this. So, a waiver from section five, four, two, two is granted for the construction of the entire sidewalk based on the town engineer testimony that a sidewalk along Main Street is not feasible. Fee in lieu of, uh, a fee in lieu will be paid for the difference between the length of the public way and the proposed walk along Route thirty-eight to the internal sidewalk of the site as determined by the planning force consulting engineer. So, um, this is something that I was unaware of until last Thursday when I got the review letter. We did a little bit more research. There actually is something already in place here. So, we'd ask you to, uh, to consider that. Um, and then, let's see. So, so the last one was kind of, uh, uh, not expected here. So, this is specific to, uh, DPW's comments regarding the parking spaces. So, if you go down to general comment number two on the letter here, says, uh, uh, the later materials planned on the parking detail in GP one showing eight-foot wide handicap parking spaces. All parking spaces shall be nine and a half feet wide. In accordance with the town zoning bylaw, the applicant shall revise the plan to conform to the town's bylaw. On this particular project, this is a relatively easy fix. I can bump out the curbing that we're read, readjusting anyways, three feet. We can make that work. I do, however, uh, ask that, uh, we consider some of the information here that we have. So, zoning is completely quiet. Section fifty-one hundred Parking and Loading Regulations does not talk about ADA compliance, handicap parking, anywhere in this. Um, you also have, uh, a town bylaw. Um, so this is the general bylaws, chapter eight point two four, specific to parking. What this says is that, and specific to handicap parking, actually, but it says that, uh, shall provide installed and maintained handicap parking spaces which shall be twelve feet wide or handicap spaces shall be provided in pairs of eight-foot spaces separated by four-foot aisle. Right? So, that gives us some direction on what the town was asking developers to do, uh, since it's not in the zone. And then the third piece of information on this thing here is specific to what the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, uh, talks about. So, what they say here, uh, for parking is that the width shall be at least eight feet wide plus the access aisle. So, that's what we have on the plan. And it even goes far in the length discussion to talk about, uh, how, how generally you want to meet the town, the local regulations length. But they don't say that as far as the width goes. So, I'm only bringing this up and I'm only, uh, having this discussion with you for kind of like further down the line here. We can make it work on this one. But, uh, I, I, I would not want to be required to make this work on every project we come through, uh, with. So, we've done a handful of projects over the last eight or ten years. This hasn't been a, uh, a comment and it hasn't been how I've designed everything that we put in front of you. So, um, it's a new comment relative to stuff we've been doing for a long time. So, I just kind of want to present that to you as well. So, with that being said, very small project. We have a DPW review letter. Uh, we're asking for the waivers specific to the sidewalk. And then, uh, we have this handicap parking thing that on this one, we can make an adjustment and address.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, so, Mr. Wright?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I don't have a problem with the handicap spots and I think it's great, the additional parking. The concern I do have is the abutting parcel that just came in front of us is going in front of DOT for a sidewalk after a long discussion with the board about waiving it, installing it, not installing it, and ultimately now approving another, um, change to the abutting parcel and not requiring a sidewalk. I understand it is a small change, but, um, this, if, if this sidewalk is added, it's continuing the connection that the town is looking for. I don't know how the, uh, other board members feel about this. But that's my only concern with the project. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Well, reading, thank you, Mr. Jim. Reading a letter from, uh, the town engineer. He talks about, uh, the two miles of roadway is only about two hundred and fifty odd feet with no sidewalk. And this being the case here, um, so what do we do? You have to put it in. And what you want to do though, and there's no requirement. There's no fear luau because it's either going to go in or not go in. But I was thinking, you know, this is an argument we have, a discussion we have all the time. The cost. In this hand, it's in the hundreds. In this hands, it's in the twenties. I'm not saying which hand holds the hundreds and the twenties, but you can figure that out. We then say, yeah, again, we have this discussion. And we've really never come to a finalized version. I can remember a conversation we had with Mr. Hardeman. Where we said, um, his price seemed excessive based on how we got it. And that was a conversation we had with him right here. And he said, well, if the contractor is doing the job and he's, you know, going down the road, he can do the job at the same time he's putting the road in. He said, simple. A lot less expensive. So, it's not like going out on Shawshin Street like they're doing now. And, um, doing a hodgepodge of a mess of a jo, uh, mess of a job, which is another issue. I, I don't know that we can, unless we say that, uh, with Mr. Hardeman and whoever else makes the decisions there, the cost has to be based on this value or this guideline. Or do we go out to bid at the time of permit? Or at the time, not a permit, but an after-permit process. I don't know how you would do it, but once you get to a cost certain, whether the developer did it or they hire, or someone else hires someone, then you'll, you'll, you'll know then what that's going to cost at that site. Because the same dollar value, same thousand square, thousand feet of sidewalk on a road that's already been constructed fifty years ago compared to a road that you're putting in today, it's apples and oranges. You just can't compare the two. No poles in the way, sidewalks in the way, I mean, uh, driveways. So, unless someone can come up with a good solution, um, I don't know what to say about it. Other than the fact that needs, we have to finish the sidewalk there. They have to finish the sidewalk. It just frustrates me because it's constant. It's been this way for half a dozen years. So, that's all.
Mr. Patel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Haley, are we okay with the fire department? I mean, I see a letter here, but I know you submitted this auto turn analysis. But are they okay with this auto turn? I mean, it seems to be, but the letter I got from them is not that specific as far as saying, yeah, they're okay with it.
Right. I don't, I don't have that. Um, so, we, we provided the auto turn figure, um, uh, with the application. Um, I've not gotten anything back from, uh, the fire department. All I can say is, uh, we are improving access, uh, because-
say is, we are improving access because we're providing, we're providing a new curb cut, or I guess connection, between the two locks. So I'm not sure how we could...
So you're not, you're not closing down the access, you're making it a little louder, a little wider out of soap?
Yeah.
So with that being said, I, I'm assuming that this letter from them is, is going along the same lines as that, but, so I wish there would be a little more definitive, but it is what it is. So and regarding the sidewalk, you know, I mean, there's always a give and take in these situations. I'm willing to go, go along with the other waivers, but there's a sidewalk that's need to be installed there for, for the benefit of the Tucksbury residents that, that use it in, with no sidewalk there. I think we're doing injustice to the town not requesting a sidewalk there and not having a sidewalk there. Just my opinion. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Patel, I mean, Mr. Delaney?
I have absolutely no problems with the parking. The parking is that parking spaces are definitely needed there. But the piece of sidewalk, I don't know how you cure the problem, or how you create a problem, or disband a problem. The sidewalk has got to go in. It's the only section on Route 38 that, you know, like Mr. Fowler said, within, you know, within five miles. It's 250 feet of sidewalk that's got to go in. And the little old lady that walks from Heatherwood every single day, that has to cross over the street to walk down the other side and then come back on the other side, it's not fair. She uses that sidewalk every day. And she's out of Heatherwood. And I, I see her walk, and I definitely believe that the sidewalk should be there. I don't know how the rest of yous feel, but that's me. That's the way I feel. It's a very busy area. The Elbow Walk, the Market Basket, sidewalk has got to go in.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delaney. So just, just for clarification, the parts of the parking that go over onto the other what, how is that being handled in the event that the two end up separated at some point?
Right. So Mr. Sadwick requested that we provide cross easements and access easements. So that'll be, you know, one of the conditions of approval, I would suggest.
All right. So as far as the sidewalk, I don't disagree with the other members that it's important that that section be done. The only thing that I would note, and it was what Mr. Hanley mentioned before, was when this was done in 2012, we had them pay into the sidewalk fund. To now ask them to foot the bill for the sidewalk installation, I mean, at that time, they were told it wasn't feasible by the town engineer at the time.
Right.
And told to pay. Now, I mean, there's not, this isn't a new project. This isn't a major renovation. This is a parking space. Parking spaces that are being installed. So this isn't like they're in the middle of construction, and they're already doing things, and it's easy to go ahead and put it in. This is going to be a from scratch sidewalk that has nothing to do with the project that's being done in terms of the parking spaces, and we already hit them up for money. So I'm a little uncomfortable with saying, you know, now put the sidewalk in. Thanks for the donation before. But I'm telling the same people that that, this isn't a new development that's coming in, and now we're saying, okay, this is new. We're doing something different. You're, you're now on the hook for a sidewalk. I feel this is kind of double dipping, and I don't know how best to handle that.
My comment, if I may.
Yeah.
My comment was, the sidewalk has to go in there. I know we took the money before. So we have the money.
Right.
So if we can come up with a proper cost, that's my whole point of this convoluted...
So then the idea, then what we were suggesting, and I must have missed it then, was that we'd be potentially asking for what's the difference between what we already took in, what we might ask for now, and what it costs to be put in as part of whatever else is going on there. Is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, do we know, if I may, what we, it'd be nice to know what we took for a fee at the time. Obviously, it's a significant difference, obviously, 2012. But again, as Mr. Fowler stated, you know, we have another one on the agenda for tonight, you know, 1,000 feet of sidewalk, and they want to give us $17,000. Material alone and asphalt's just under $10,000. I don't know where we can, if you can find that contractor to install that, have them call me. I'll put them to work tomorrow.
You bet.
Because it can't be done. And that's...
But just, I just don't want to crisscross two things. That's an issue we have...
You know, I'm just saying this is going back to taking an additional amount of money.
It's just, how do we, you know, so I think Mr. Fowler's suggestion would be to try to figure out, well, a combination between the two comments. What did we take before?
Okay.
And again, I still feel a little uncomfortable because now we're talking about a 2021 number against what we told them in 2012. Because, I mean, revisionist history, would it have made sense to just install a sidewalk we basically agreed didn't make any sense back then? So I don't know. I just, I'm just, like I said, I just feel a little uncomfortable with going backwards and how we account for what we asked and told them before, since this isn't completely, you know, some new construction, some more parking spaces being installed. I don't know if the petitioners have any comment on that. That's just, I don't know.
Yeah. I guess so, we know that there was the waiver granted in 2012. I don't know that it was ever actually paid for. I don't know that. I actually reached out to Alex today to try to find that out. And she wasn't able to find it, you know, this afternoon when she looked.
That bodes well.
Yeah. Right. So there was a, the waiver was granted, right? So we now have this waiver in place that allows the owner to do something, right? And the other thing is, I believe, the, the idea here is that the, the reason that the waiver was issued and allowed was because we provided access into the site. When I say we, I mean in 2012. So if you can see my cursor here, there is an existing sidewalk that comes up. The idea was that we're going to bring it through here, down and around. And I know that's not consistent with how you're viewing it now, but that was part of the discussion in 2012. Mr. Kuko indicated to me just a minute ago. So there's some moving...
Wasn't there something else too about the, the, the front?
So...
Yeah, because of how deep it is?
Yeah. And that I don't know. So I, I don't think that I could, I could speak to that, because I only saw what I saw from DPW and then the old permit. I didn't, I've never looked at the frontage to, from the perspective of actually putting the sidewalk in. So I'm really not prepared to speak about whether or not that is something we could even agree to tonight, unfortunately.
On the plus side, I have a feeling that we're not going to be finished tonight. So I guess you'll be able to give an answer.
Yeah.
I don't know. Does MBL have any thoughts or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that I take a look into this to see what the director recommends in terms of the fee, and to verify if the fee was received or not.
Yeah. Because I didn't get the indication from the town engineer's letter that he was aware of the previous, I don't know how many town engineers ago that was, what they had said at the time, and the fact that we took a fee at the time. This, I'm sorry, I get the feeling he's viewing this as a request for a waiver presently.
Currently, yes.
If I may, at that time, going back, it might have been our engineer consultant, our consultant at that time. Maybe not. Maybe...
I just remember vaguely remember, and you know, we're going back a ways here, that it was because there weren't any other sidewalks on that side at the time.
Right.
And there were a few other reasons, and I don't remember what they were. But now, obviously, things have changed, and they are trying to link up all that sidewalk. Like I said, I just feel like there's a little, something we got to figure out here. This is a little unique. So I think, so I think for that portion of it, I think we do do a little research. You know, I think obviously it would be in the petitioner's best interest to come up with ideas as well.
Yeah. Agreed.
Other than that, do we have any other issues though with this? I don't think so, right? Is that, everybody feels comfortable with everything else?
The main issue is...
So I think that's this.
Parking spaces, right.
Right. And I mean, that's all there really is. So it's, we seem to have no issue with the main request. I think we just need to figure out what are we going to do about this. So I think, you know, the more conversations you have in between as well, the better off we're going to be.
Yep.
All right. So I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none at this time. Bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Continue to, so next, what's our next meeting?
Next meeting is on November 8th, and the slot would be 7:05.
Hope to continue to November 8th at 7:05.
All right.
Tom Planer?
So the only other thing I would ask, because we, you know, we don't like approving things without, but if I understand it correctly, we're generally all set with this. If this issue can be resolved, we may be in a position to take a final vote on the 8th. We're generally all set with this. If this issue can be resolved, we may be in a position to take a final vote on the 8th. Correct? We're generally all set with this. If this issue can be resolved, we may be in a position to take a final vote on the 8th. Correct? We're generally all set with this. If this issue can be resolved, we may be in a position to take a final vote on the 8th. Correct? We're generally all set with this. If this issue can be resolved, we may be in a position to take a final vote on the 8th. Correct? We're generally all set with this. If this issue can be resolved, we may be in a position to take a final vote on the 8th. Correct? All right. Moving on to agenda item E, 1880 Main Street. Modification to Site Plan Special Permit Continued.
For the record, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Mark Ginsberg, App Coop.
Just to kind of recap where we were the last time we were here. It was the last planning board meeting. We had received a review letter of... Just to kind of recap where we were the last time we were here. It was the last planning board meeting. We had received a review letter of... Just to kind of recap where we were the last time we were here. It was the last planning board meeting. We had received a review letter of the Friday...
Good things. So I think, all we think, the items that we discussed previously have been, which were very few, have been taken care of. There was a question about what was being used and done in the cellar. I thought that was a funny question. It's a cellar floor. What do you do with any cellar? Okay.
Loaded up.
So I thought it was a non-question. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
All right. Mr. Patel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm all set as well. I mean, I was happy to see the proponent being able to put up a picture of the actual silo that's there. Like I said in our last meeting we're here, I thought it was a great design and a great asset to the area. And I'm glad we were able to get it up on the screen for people to see. And with that...
Mr. Rata?
All set, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm really all set. But the thing is, that was all farmland at one time. And I think the silo brings it back to what the land is actually, what the land was there at the time. So I have no problems with this. I'm all set.
The chair is all set as well. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none? Bring it back to the board. Just beginning, you didn't have anything you needed to add, right?
No.
Just wanted to check. What is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Most of those are here.
Motion made in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to the modification to Site Plan Special Permit, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the modification of Site Plan Special Permit as submitted. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Oh, a second. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All set? Moving on to agenda item F, 30 East Street. Site Plan, Site Plan Special Permit, Special Permit for the Town Center Obelé District and Groundwater Protection District Continued.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, represent the applicant. The owner, Holden Irrevocable Trust, the petitioner is Carolina Properties LLC. And just a little bit of clean, clearing, cleaning up the, some loose ends, there's a letter I have to submit from Mr. Holden, in which he gives permission to Carolina Properties and Jerry Welsh to be acting in his behalf here today for this
Thank you.
All set. You just pass this down?
Okay. Just make note that Mr. Welsh is in the audience with us here today. Also with me at the table is Dennis Grechi, who is the engineer in charge of the project. There are, there is a letter from the town engineer, which was received just, I believe, on Friday. There has been a response. I'll have Dennis over, you know, the key points. We believe that all the issues are resolved or able to be resolved. We do not have a response letter from Mr. Hardeman to the response to the letter from Friday. So it's understandable that, you know, we expect them that we will have that before the next meeting. But Mr. Chairman, permission, I'd like to turn it over to Dennis to review the points and how the issues have been addressed relative to the engineer's report.
Laura Jones?
Good evening, members of the board. Dennis Grechi with Andover Consultants. We did provide a response letter to both the engineering department comments and also the planning department comments on Friday, along with some revised plans. Additionally, we revised the plans not only to respond to the engineering department comments and planning comments, but also some feedback we received from the board at the October 4th meeting. One of the issues that came up at that meeting was the ability for the cars in the rear unit to turn in and out of the property or out of the garage. So we've widened that drive aisle considerably. So we're at, you know, almost 28 feet down, or 29 feet at its widest, to give that, that unit owner the ability to pull out and do a two-point maneuver out of that space. We striped that area to prevent, you know, other visitors from parking there. That would also be something I'm sure the fire department would want to see, so that they still have the ability to pull in and, and pull out in the event that they need to respond to any calls. We have, we were also discussing snow storage at the last meeting. The site, of course, is tight. We have found an opportunity for a second snow storage area on the property. The applicant has also agreed to a condition to remove snow in the event that we do have a, you know, a lot of snow or events back to back. We did also include the waivers. There's three waivers that we are requesting, two-dimensional waivers that the board has the ability to waive in the Town Center Obelé District. The third waiver we're requesting is the, the requirement to provide a master signage plan. We believe that we can develop one at this stage of the development process. One isn't developed, but we're... One isn't developed, but we're working with the historical commission to put a monument or a plaque on the building denoting its historic value. Some of the members, structural members, that we saved and incorporated into the new build. I can go over the individual comments from the engineering department, but the significant changes were the widening of the drive aisle. We also moved the handicap or accessible parking space closer to the commercial unit. That was something also the board members touched on last meeting. So that's moved closer or proximate to the commercial mixed-use building, which would be the most likely candidate for someone with accessibility issues to be visiting. If the board members have any questions about any other changes, I'd be happy to answer them. I also have the two comments from the planners, if I may, a rendering of the two proposed buildings, showing the architecture which we're showing here, and also a revised elevation plan showing the heights of the building as well. So I can...
Just the cross-section?
Yeah.
This is for the file?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So again, just to demonstrate that the architectural will be keeping in line with the circle's nature of the existing building and also incorporating some feedback from the historical commission we received earlier in the process.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Rata.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Other snow storage is just on the other side of the parking, budding the church lot.
That is correct. We have a second snow storage just beyond the porch space we're providing. So it's a relatively flat area there. Technically, then we're able to stockpile some additional snow.
I still think that even... A bit concerned with what will end up happening with the snow along that hash mark that says no parking. And it's just going to be humid. That's going to fill with snow. Access. I do like the renderings. I think it sticks with the town center. I'm just still a bit concerned with that access to that back building in that back. One garage coming, pulling straight in. I'm good for now.
All right. Mr. Delaney?
I almost don't know what kind of a question to ask. The parking garage that goes into the side, you know, you've got a building... As a matter of fact, what is it, building number three?
The units aren't numbered, but there's three units in the rear building?
Yeah. The back unit. You'd have to drive into both units to get the garage. It seems to me like when a car is pulling in there day and night, you're going to have a problem with noise, the lights from the car and the garage door going up and down. I suppose that happens even in the front, but it just seems it's more... More brought out even more. You know, it's... There's just something missing there. I might be all right with this, because I've been trying to figure it out from... From the way you brought him in here. I just don't know how that parking is going to work going into the side of the building in front of the other two. That was my question before, and it's still my question now. Okay. Well, I suppose if that's the only way you can get that parking space in there, and the rest of the board feels as though it's the right thing to do, I'll go along with it. But right now, I just have a problem with that parking space. I don't know why. It just sits wrong.
Mr. Fattali?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. Have you changed these plans at all since our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, to what degree?
A lot of the changes were, or say, a number of the changes were responding to the engineering department comments, so some subtle changes that the board may not notice, changes to slopes of pipes, calling out more, you know, detail to the stormwater system.
Okay, so let me ask you what I was looking at. Was there always three units? Or was the three units considering the entire building is three units?
There was always three units in the rear building. And the front building, the standalone building, is commercial office bottom floor and residential second floor.
Okay, so you're including that entire building as one building with three units in it, right?
Correct.
Three, two-bedroom units?
There are two-bedroom units in the rear and one bedroom unit.
So I looked at the plans, I'm like, does he have three units in that one building? But it's three units for the entire building itself. So I got you, okay. So, you know, looking at the plans over the weekend, like you mentioned it earlier today when you started, that the site is really tight, really tight. So one of my concerns is that maybe you have too many units there for some reason, somehow. I don't know if you can condense that, because the last thing we need is too many units in there and then having problems with parking and accessibility for visitors and everything else, you know? So there's no visitor parking here as it is, correct?
The zoning requires nine spaces in total. We have 10 spaces, that's including the accessible parking space. So we're meeting the minimum zoning requirement.
Yeah. But no visitor?
No visitor, no signed visitor parking space.
Right, okay. And I think that's an issue myself, because people have visitors. People have guests over for dinner or whatever, or visitors that maybe overlap as far as the business goes. You know, so where are they going to park? They're going to park in a residence spot if there's no other spot to go to. So they're going to have to go there.
Typically, a unit or a development like this will have assigned parking with, you know, parking badges or some other, you know, system with, you know, the threat of towing. But I understand the comment. We have discussed, you know, where visitors may park. It would be further down Main Street or on, you know, the street parking where available.
Yeah. Couple of other comments I have is I know you wanted to say you wanted to hold off on the sign location. But the problem we have sometimes when you do that is you don't have a place designated while we're in this discussion over a number of two, three, four meetings. So now we get stuck with saying, you have to put it here because we have no other place to put it. And that goes along the same lines as a CBU post office box. If you were going to wait to discuss it with the postmaster, I don't think that ever happened. Or they never came out, I don't believe. So again, you're going to have to put it in this place that may not be suitable for us, because we're not going to have a say in it for the most part, because it's only going to be able to go in one location probably.
We can provide a sign location if the board requests that. We can certainly work with the developer to come up with a sign location for the historic sign and also a sign that may identify whoever's occupying the office space.
At least an idea or a general concept, saying maybe we can put it here or put it on the building. I mean, so that we're not going into the whole process blind and then be stuck with having to put it somewhere else we're not happy with so far.
Mr. Fattali, just if I could ask for some guidance relative to... There would be actually two signs that we're probably going to be focusing on. And I agree that it would be... Makes sense to have that part of the special permit. If it falls under the special permit requirement of the planning board for a development of the site. One of the signs is going to be at the... Just a plaque. And looking at the section, I think it's 5200, I don't think that a plaque... And this is going to be designed by the historic commission. And they have been very supportive of this plan. So it would be just something with an historical plaque to put on the front building, which is going to incorporate some of the historical interior. There's a beam, I think, that's going to be incorporated into the building of the structure and other components that they were very happy about. So it's going to be a plaque as designed by the historic commission that I don't think is going to be part of the overview of the special permit. But the other sign is one that, you know, again, at the suggestion of the historic commission is to name it Briggs Place because of the historical connotation to the Briggs name. And I believe that that would fall under 5244 as being a special permit. So it probably would make sense that we give you some sort of rendering of a plan and have it incorporated into the decision, a special permit for the placement and setup of the Briggs Place signage, you know, designated the development under that name.
Yep. So my last comment, and I'll let others people speak, but I know you're looking for a waiver for the rear setback, correct? So you have 21 feet in this...
We have 16 feet to a deck, and then we have the 21 feet to the actual structure of the building.
Structure. And you're looking for a 29-foot waiver per se, foot waiver, correct?
Right, it requires a 15-foot rear setback and 50-foot one budding a residential district. So that section is kind of where the districts change. So we're requesting the 50 feet be reduced to the 21 feet.
Yep. Again, a reason for my saying that the site is really tight, because without waiver, you have no project per se, you know, so.
Right.
Other than the fact that if the building was moved up in order to try to address the waiver request, and then you end up with the parking in the back. And part of the standards of the TCOD is that your waiver is when the end... Design actually makes sense, that it's better designed for the project itself. So it suggests that this would be something where it makes more sense to push the building back, have the parking in between the two buildings, rather than have them all together and then parking in the back.
Understood, Mr. Plunkett. With that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, until we get to the next meeting.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll touch on the sign. If you're going to have a nice ornate sign saying Briggs Place, then I imagine either on that sign you would have the number 30. I don't know. Not saying you have to do 30 East Street. I imagine people will know about East Street, but most of us would know, wouldn't it? Anyways, so if you were to combine that, we wouldn't have a cluttering of signs on the front of that building. Because obviously, it's not going to be very large, because it would be to the right or left of the door. You know, you brought up something, Tony Plunkett, about the building pulled forward. And then you mentioned something about having all the parking behind it. Is that something you were thinking about, or?
No, I think that was not deemed the desirable design. Therefore, that's the basis of the waiver, that it makes more sense to separate the front commercial building from the back residential building and have some sort of separation, which would be the locus of some of the parking.
I mean, there's only one space in the front anyways. So I don't know what... Commercial entity wouldn't have any guest. That's my concern, going along with what Mr. Delaney said about, Mr. Fattali maybe, about visitors.
There's three spaces in the front of the site. One, the accessible, and then there's two spaces on the right side of the drive aisle.
Okay.
And that was going back to the concept plan that we submitted to the board, you know, several months ago. We did have a discussion with the... We initially had the commercial building in the back with a row parking and the residential up front. And we thought the better layout of the site in the Town Center Obelé District was the commercial in the front. Push the residential back, so the residents aren't constantly having visitors to the law office, wherever the building may be, back and forth in front of the building where the residents were.
Reading the bylaws today, yesterday, about the size of this parcel, is it factual that it does not require snow storage?
The snow storage, reading the bylaws, is applicable to facilities that have 20 or more parking spaces. So we don't trigger that threshold. We're not required to calculate and provide a snow storage calculation plan.
I mean, it's a nice idea to have it.
We are trying to designate spaces for parking, we know, or for snow storage, because we understand that it's a reality, but it's not a requirement of the bylaw.
Right. I don't... In difference to a couple of the members, I don't have a problem with garages underneath the units. That's how town... Kind of green too. Any units in a row, and they all have a garage underneath, and they're all side-by-side. So it's not any difference to that, so. And the... The deck is set just accessible from the inside of the unit? Or there are stairs going out down to the ground, are there?
Second means to vigorous. Wait, the second means to vigorous, that's upstairs. They put a stair from the rear deck. There's stairs down from the rear deck.
I want to see what they say.
There probably will be stairs from that deck down to grade.
Okay. I don't see them, but I know there should be.
Yeah.
And I just don't want to have it missed. I know the building inspector will pick up on it, I'm sure.
It may be, I don't know if it's going to be one step, or it just might be one step down to grades.
Sure, whatever. So that'd be only... Yeah, that's the first floor anyways. I think for now, I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
All right, so for... On the sign, so this... Obviously, the building has like a classic look, and I'd make sure that the sign keeps that in mind as well and tries to incorporate that, so it fits with everything else.
And I believe the historic commission is also going to give some input on the Briggs. The historic commission will give some input onto the Briggs, a place sign.
They want to design the actual plaque on the building.
The plaque, yes. I'm referring to the actual sign that you're going to... I want it to be something that looks and fits with the fact that already the building has that older look. You're going to incorporate the, you know, the historical nature into the front building. That I want the sign to not look like, you know... It can be, you know, 2021 building, but I'd like it to have that look of the building from back in the day, because I think that would fit better. You know, I'll say the same thing as Mr. Rider on that widened area for the turnaround. I mean, as long as it's clear, it works. So it's going to be... It's going to have to be a condition in this that it stays clear, that it be cleared anytime there's snow. I see it says no parking. I think that's going to end up needing to be one of those no parking or you'll be towed signs, because you just, you know, because I can already envision people saying, yeah, I'll just park over there, you know? And it... Sure, maybe in theory it doesn't matter, except for that one person pulling out of that garage. But when it's the other two unit owners who say, go park over there, and now the third one's trying to get out of the driveway, I mean, out of the garage, and now they're going to back down the entire driveway, that's going to be a problem. So that has to be clear. It has to be, you know, kept for that purpose, both from a parking standpoint and a snow or any other debris or whatnot. Other than that, with the exception of the outstanding, you know, engineering stuff, I don't have anything else. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair? I may.
Mr. Rata?
Yeah. Thank you. What is your setback showing from the Garcia property? It's not stated here. You'll have to scale with me. 12 feet?
We can dimension it. We can dimension it. It's probably, it's probably a minimum of 12 feet. We do have the sides, the 10-foot side setback dashed on that, on that sheet two of five. That light dash line is indicating the 10-foot rear or 10-foot side setback.
Okay.
So we're probably a few feet beyond that.
Well, and just, I bring that up because as Mr. Plunkett stated, you know, you know, moving the building to the front and having parking in the back, but at the end of the day, we need to be considerate of the two abutting properties too, having ultimately a two-story property at 10 feet looking into their backyard. So I understand the Town Center overlay requirements, but by pushing the parking in the back there, that's going to give some more privacy to the abutters. Following up with what Mr. Fattalia stated, I think if you did reduce the number of units in there, you'd give yourself ample visitor parking, as well the potential of making the unit, the two units a little bit bigger, and giving some, and not looking for your waiver on the setback. A 29-foot waiver is, is a reason they have 50-foot setbacks abutting residential property. So it would be interesting to see what the, what it looked like with just two units in the back.
Might be, probably a bigger question, but I mean, we might want to figure out the parking calcs for these things, because I think we keep bringing this up with the visitor parking, not for you guys, I'm just using guys as an example, but I'm, I'm sort of loathe to, to impose, they're meeting the parking requirement as it is.
I understand.
But that's the parking requirement on paper, and then in everybody's head, we think about visitors coming. I think maybe that might be something we might want to consider bringing up with the new rules, that we may have to figure out a way to add some, just so, you know, when petitions are coming in, they account for this stuff in advance and not, you know, we're making up on the fly where we're like, but in reality, you know they're going to have visitors.
Sure.
But we never account for that in the, in the actual calc that the petitions are given.
During this discussion, I was trying to remember what the plan looked like, what the numbers were on 937, 937, the old police station, MDR, how many visitor spots there are for the units out front, not, not the stuff all back, because that's separate. And I'm not, I think it was two or three, but there are two and a half times the number of units there that they have here.
It just feels like something that we probably need to work into the calculation going forward, so that we're not, you know, because reality is, there'll be visitors probably, and these numbers maybe should need to figure a way to account for that.
Sure. I mean, you're concerned you get a visitor that's going to come and pull in front of the garage of building one. Now, you can't get by that car, you know, 11 and a half feet, 12 feet, that car's pulled up to that garage door, visiting, not knowing that there's no visiting parking. Now, the individual can't get into door two nor door three. So there's a concern of that. Yeah, and you can go through, okay, I can call a tow truck and I can go through that, but that doesn't make for very good neighbors, when the first time you tow your neighbor's visitor. So try to avoid that before somebody finds that, so.
I mean, there'd be an expectation of courtesy on the owners also, to know where their visitors are parking, and if they park in front of somebody else's, that would be the same at any, no matter what. If they come in and say, where'd you park, oh, I just parked in front of your neighbor's garage door, you're going to tell them to move.
Well, no, I'm saying your own, your garage door. I mean, if I own building one, and I have a visitor not knowing, I'm going to have visitors at my property. So he pulls in, he has no place to park.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to park in front of that without seeing the garage doors right adjacent to them.
I always liked, David, when you use that word, expectation.
Thanks. But that's what, I mean, again, if we look at the purpose of the Town Center overlay district though, it's to, you look at what's there right now, and that the whole purpose of this overlay district was to give incentive to people to come in and put the investment into properties in order to help us upgrade and improve. And this is certainly be a significant upgrade and improvement to what's there now, and would be a great benefit to our town center in terms of what we're trying to achieve in the middle. This is a key piece of.
That just reminded me, because I'd asked a question at the last hearing about how many units and cars were on the property as of now versus what would be in the future? What's the real difference? Did we get an answer to that?
I asked a question.
So if you, I just got to, it's not that you can't speak, it's just if you're going to speak, you're going to have to come up to the table, because it's got to go into the mic, or go up to the podium. If you state your name, so they know, so they'll be able to know.
I did ask that question, but I didn't get an answer to the question.
Can we, can we try to track down that answer before the next hearing? Because I want to know, because again, it's the same thing as the one across the street, when the real difference is, if this, and I'm just making up numbers, if there was 18 people there and 10 cars, and now there's going to be 20 people there and 12 cars, that's the real difference. And that's what we're talking about in terms of what's the difference in density. It's not 20, it's the difference between 18 and 20. So I'd like to have that answer for the next hearing.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, is it, is it possible to anticipate that the next meeting that we could generate a draft of a decision just for review and?
I think you'd almost have to.
Yeah, I've had a problem with that. It's just, there are some outstanding, so it's the more that those seem settled, the easier that that draft and how many holes it's going to have in it, but, you know, if you want to work, you know, with Ms. McGinty on the beginnings of that, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something?
Yep.
So typically, I just draft the, the conditions and the waivers, and not the full decision.
Yep.
So I can certainly work with the applicant on that, and if they want to submit.
I mean, those are the ones we want to get squared away at that meeting, you know what I mean? The fact, the rest of the boilerplate can go in. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page for conditions, we're all on the same page for waivers. Okay? All right. So with that, we have a motion to continue to 710 on November 8th.
Some more.
Second.
So a motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item G.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are.
Administrative actions continue. This is G1, 937 North Street, nonsubstantial change determination.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Robert Scarono for the applicant David Ward. Mr. Ward is requesting a nonsubstantial change. The change is the sewer connection that was proposed back in 2017. As you may remember, there was discussion about upgrading the pump station on Route 133, as its capacity was close. That change has been made, and the off-site condition required going up North Street and down 133 to eventually gravity and pump. It was a stretch to do it then, and there is a manhole on site that was installed prior to International Drive being improved, when David Ward and Chadwick were building their building, which is now the Lowell Fire Building. The facilitation for that gravity-fed sewer was in place and installed, and has been installed since that building went online. It's actually installed prior to the construction of that building. I sent some pictures of the structure that's on site, still in great shape. Of course, DPW would have us do the required testing, et cetera, and I think that's addressed in the DPW letter that accompanies the response to this package. So in essence, we're taking a condition in Section 10, Page 12, Number 5, and we're altering it to state that the sewer connection can be made to the on-site manhole rather than facilitated up North Street, which would eliminate a pressure situation. The DPW did have a list of other conditions that were part of the original approval. All of those things can be accommodated at the time that construction is anticipated to commence, but as we all know, that hotels aren't quite in favor for construction these days, and there was financing available to do that. So we continue to work with a couple of different alternatives, and we may very well be back here for another modification as it relates to that use, but that's not here for tonight. Tonight, all we're talking about is the sewer and the sewer connection that's on site. We did provide some language that would be used to replace condition number five. We redlined the existing special permit and provided that narrative that would replace it. There is also a condition that, that the pump station be determined, if I may, pump station be determined according to Code of Mass regulations. I don't have a document for that one.
Okay.
But I do have one for the G on the paper.
I'll take this, I'll look at this.
As it relates to Code of Mass regulations, it's 110 gallons per day, I mean, per unit, as it, as it relates to the expected flow, which would be consistent with all the hotels in the area, and certainly within the capacity of this pump station. With that, I'd entertain any questions from the board.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Fowler.
I think whatever the town feels has to be done, and you feel you can do, we should do it. So if you guys are on the same page, which it seems like you are, I don't have any problem with it.
I think we can demonstrate compliance with the DPW and all their regulations, as well as the requirements that they're looking to have us satisfy.
Okay, good. Mr. Ryder?
Yeah, I agree. Meeting DPW requirements, as well as working with Mr. Hardeman, making sure, you know, what you're trying to, you know, provide to them, and that their system can handle it, I think, work it out, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Fattalia?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a win-win if we all work together, get it done, and then move forward. Any plans as far as the new site, anybody looking into it, or any feelers, no?
Ton of, ton of people looking into it. We really feel that the market has changed a little bit.
Absolutely.
Of course, our vacations beat the need for business travel right now. I think they're waiting for those two to catch up, but there are a number of people interested. We have interest every day, and we're trying to stick to the plan that you approved, that we spent a lot of time on, of course, has been interested about changing the plan, and we're simply not interested in dealing with folks that want to change the plan.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I go along with everybody else's, the DPW is online, they are online too.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm all right, as long as we use those three conditions that Mr. Hardeman added, and otherwise, I'm all set. Not a public hearing, so first thing is a motion on whether this is or is not a nonsubstantial change.
I don't think it is.
No, I mean, just relocating from a gravity to?
No, we need to find that it's a nonsubstantial change for.
It is a nonsubstantial.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we have to, that it is nonsubstantial.
Yes.
And then that'll let us make the decision. So first.
Right.
A motion that this is a nonsubstantial change. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Motion made in second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, as to the change requested, do we have a motion on that?
Yes, to approve the nonsubstantial change, providing that the three items that DPW engineer requested.
Okay. Ms. McGinty, you got, all right with that? All right.
Second.
So a motion made in second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Moving on to agenda item G2, 2230 Main Street, nonsubstantial change determination.
Good evening, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Kyle Pruppi.
All right, so. So, Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight to request a nonsubstantial change to SPS 2017-009. The plan here on the screen has kind of been marked up to show you what has changed on this plan. So number one here is that we eliminated eight parking spaces along the backside of the building here. These were parallel spaces, and I can flip down to you, so you can see what they were like here previously there. So we eliminate those, we added handicap parking spaces at the back corners on both of these side aisles, along with handicap ramps, and that was to provide access to, I think there's four or five doors located along the back, that won't be connected to the main hall, so there'd be kind of those units in the back, so we just wanted to make sure that we had spaces along the entire thing. In the front, we didn't lose any parking spaces or anything, but we just reconfigured the parking spaces so that the access aisles were directly in front of the doors. So we have some columns that sit along that sidewalk for the building overhead, and once all of that was finalized, and we knew exactly where those columns and the doors would go, we wanted to make sure we provided access, we just kind of had to reconfigure, reconfigure the striping. I'm going to skip four for a second, hit over five, which is this corner. On the original plan, we called out a transformer at this location, and when National Grid came in, it was about twice the size of what we anticipated at the time. So they, we modified the radius at that location from a 10-foot radius to a 5-foot radius. Just to give you a sense, this is what it looked like previously here, so a minor modification just to be able to keep the transformer and the bollards with, with how National Grid is requested that they pick. And then the final thing here is really all we did was add some, a bunch of additional detail here, just on the curb ramps, as well as the ramp that goes out to, to Main Street. So where do we stand right now? We submitted on October 15th. We got a review letter from the planner on the 20th indicating to defer to DPW and fire. On that same day, we also got, I guess, a car to condition locate for the fire department. Their standard language, it basically says, we reserve the right to drive the truck through the facility after the point, but it appears to comply with the design standard that they have. We did provide this turning movement plan as well. Then on the 21st, we got a letter from DPW. So again, this goes into the, the discussion that I had on the previous application with regard to zoning and handicap spaces. So Mr. Hardeman has noted that the zoning bylaw requires all spaces to be nine and a half feet, which is correct, but we have the situation where the zoning bylaw does not reference handicap spaces at all under the parking requirement. The town's general bylaws have a section specific to handicap parking, which we comply with. And then we also, obviously, are going to comply with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board as well as ADA. So kind of in this situation here, this one, it actually means a little bit more, because in order to satisfy DPW's comment, we in order to satisfy DPW's comment, we end up, we end up losing two spaces. So we got this comment, it was Thursday. On Friday, we put a little bit of time into this to just look at what it would take to satisfy that requirement. In essence, we can, we can tweak the front to make it work without losing any spaces. Just to give you a sense of where we are, construction-wise, is they paved last week, late last week. So we actually have pavement down, we have curbing in, we have sidewalks in, and then we got this comment Thursday of last week. So what would happen is if we want to comply with DPW's comments, we have essentially a 13-foot striped-out area here at each one of these corners, which results in us losing two parking spaces. Now, we're above and beyond the minimum required to satisfy zoning, but we hate to lose parking spaces along the perimeter of the building where we already lost a couple over there. So that being said, I'm kind of curious or interested on what your thoughts are specific to this handicap parking issue.
Just, just for clarification, the, the general bylaw sets them at what?
Sure. So I actually have it here. So I think there's three pieces of information. There's the zoning bylaw that doesn't say anything. I searched for ADA and handicap, it doesn't say anything. The town bylaws, chapter 8.24, is down here and it says, "Shall provide install and maintain handicap parking spaces which shall be 12 feet wide, or the handicap spaces shall be provided in pairs of eight-foot spaces separated by a four-foot aisle." So what they're saying is that, is closer to be consistent with ADA, which says that a handicap parking space needs to be a minimum of eight feet wide. And then you have an accessible aisle, which if it's a van, that's an additional eight feet that's striped out, or if it's a regular car space, it's five feet that are striped out. That's the challenge that, that we have because zoning is silent on handicap.
And the size of the spaces that you provide are, are they nine?
Yeah, so we actually have eight-foot spaces on the plan that we submitted with the request, which would be this plan right here. So if I zoom in right here, I kind of have a bunch of drawings on this here, but this space right here with the handicap symbol, that's eight feet from side to side in a five-foot aisle, which would comply with the general bylaw and ADA. It does not comply with DPW's interpretation of the zone.
Okay. So let me just, just to make another clarification before I open it up to the members. Ms. McGinty, if we were going to allow this, what would be the process of allowing it? Would we say that they have to be compliant with the town's general bylaw on handicap parking?
Yes, I believe so.
So if we say it that way, it would allow for what's up on, on the board here and cover the issue with the discrepancy with what the town engineer is requesting? Is that right?
Yeah, so the parking spaces do have to meet the ADA requirements.
Which the version you're proposing does.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Just as a point of clarification too, so this is the plan that we're trying to modify that's on the screen right there and you can see that we had eight feet on the old plan and some, so sometimes we miss things and whatnot, but like, this is very typical for what we've done throughout town over the last 10 years.
Right, but to avoid you having to come back here again.
Yeah.
In order to clear this up now, if we make reference to the fact that the petitioner has to comply with the town's general bylaw on handicap spaces and ADA requirements, that should be sufficient to prevent them from being held up for nine and a half foot spaces, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
My understanding.
That sound, everybody else sound, that sound right?
Yes.
Just to, Rada?
Mr. Chair, I mean, ultimately, the town engineer is referring back to town bylaw, which the town bylaw states eight feet with a four-foot between. But he's stating...
9.5.
9.5.
I just want to clear it up here because I don't want to have to do this again.
No, I agree. I just, what is the town engineer reading that's the difference? What information is or what is he going off of versus what the town bylaw is? Because I just, this is going to continue, obviously, this is twice, we're seeing it tonight. First time with, I recall seeing this comment being brought up.
Well, and obviously it didn't come up when we approved this the first time either, so.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't get a chance to speak to Mr. Hardeman, but my interpretation of his comment is he's referring to the town bylaw, but I think he means the zoning bylaw because it would make sense then because your zoning bylaw says nine and a half feet. So.
Okay. But I think if we, if we, if we include that in the, the nonsubstantial change, provided we decide to make a nonsubstantial change, if we include that language, it should take care of this and we won't have to deal with it and we'll figure out the rest going forward, how we make sure we deal with this at the beginning.
Sure.
All right. Okay, so I will now open it up to the board now. So start, Mr. Fattaya?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. I just like to see this move forward, get through the discrepancy we have here. I mean, it's pavement, it's been done. I think if they are doing what they say they're doing, then I'm fine with that. You know, I did see the department, fire department letter stating, it appears to address the fire department's access concerns. With that said, I'm all set.
Mr. Delaney?
The only question I would have is the, the elimination of your eight spaces in the back. Is that the actual density that's needed within the project?
It does not, no. So, so based on a worst-case scenario, we are still have eight additional parking spaces above and beyond what would be required. So we're providing 97 and we're requiring 89. And I think when we came in here previously, we were like 105 or something along those lines.
Okay, I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler?
Likewise.
Mr. Rada?
All set.
So just one, one question on, you just put up, you're eliminating the ones in the back. Are you doing something also that would, that's going in the place of where those spaces were or you just didn't want to put them in anymore because you don't think you need them?
Patio area for the four additional room units out the back.
Okay, so in, if, so what my real question was, if it turned out that somewhere down the line, we thought, gee, you kind of need more parking, they could not then be put in, is that it?
Correct.
Correct. It couldn't.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I'm going to bring that up. All right, so I'm all set otherwise. What is the pleasure of the board as to whether this is a nonsubstantial change?
I'll make a motion that we determine it is a nonsubstantial change.
All right.
Second.
Motion made in second. Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the nonsubstantial change request itself, we have a motion.
Making a motion to approve the nonsubstantial change of 2230 Main Street as, as discussed tonight.
All right, so as submitted with the addition of the language to take care of the handicap spots that we discussed this evening.
Right.
That references the general bylaw.
And ADA requirements and that should clear up.
Yep.
Okay, so with that information all included, as well as what was submitted, so I have that motion. I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck. Mr. Croopy, since you're here, I figured we might as well just bring it up and thank you for the fact that your project was the one that got us to the 10% for, even though we've moved on.
Yes.
But we did reach the 10% for affordable housing right before it changed, so your project did that, so.
Thank you.
Number two. Mr. Croopy? Take Anthony with you. Yep, number two, take Anthony with you.
Moving on to agenda item G3.
Don't lose your ass. You're going to get an admission call.
G3, which is 1009 Livingston Street, nonsubstantial change request.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
We get plaques for the back of those chairs for you too.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight, basically it's a nonsubstantial change and I think it's a two-step process here. The original waiver allowed us to either build what we show on this plan right here and come in and talk about proportion that we're not and provide a fee, or to build out all of the sidewalk, right? So even what was not shown on this plan. What we'd like to discuss tonight is the, the potential for not building any sidewalk out here tonight. So I think that would be a modi, so step one would be a modification to that waiver to allow us not to build any sidewalk, but come to you with a fee prorated for the entire sidewalk. So that's step one. And then I guess, so I guess I'm not sure if we start there and then talk about step two or how we do it.
Well, you can throw step two out and we'll see how far we get.
Okay, so. All right, so step two is, is basically the, the same kind of formula that we've been using for previous developments where we've asked you to consider a fee in lieu. So we're at $17 per linear foot, which is $17,629. So the important things to keep in mind here are that the, the fee should be, it should be based on the cost of construction of such wave sidewalks, right? So not the cost for the town to construct an equal amount of sidewalk. That's in the zoning, that's section 9.5.5, in, in like a real critical consideration for this. Obviously, the next bullet is we have 1,037 feet. The roadway is currently under construction. And so when we do this analysis, the clearing and grubbing is already done, the unclassified excavation is done, the lumen borrow and seed have already been performed or will be performed onsite. So those items should not be included in the fee in lieu calculation. As we've discussed in the past, when they go down and they build this roadway, they're not just boxing in 24 feet of gravel, there's some over, over spread on that so that we can set curbs in that area. So the way we've looked at that in the past is that we've, we've discussed how half of the required five-foot width of gravel needed to construct the sidewalks is placed as part of the typical roadway construction and therefore the quantities associated with these items should be adjusted accordingly. And I guess the final piece here is, is mass DOT and what those unit prices are best for. And they're not best for small residential roadways where private contractors are building for private owners. They're just not best for that. They're, they're a decent guide, but they're not, they're not meant for that stuff. So as I've highlighted on this thing, the way we arrive at that $17 a foot, and we've done that in the past, is the gravel quantities have been reduced by 50% to account for the roadway construction, which is currently under construction, and the DOT pricing used for the gravel has been reduced 50% to reflect more realistic pricing. So that's, that's how we support what we're putting in front of you. I did see DPW's letter. Obviously, we're miles apart, right? I think the critical piece here is what does it take for our client to build that same sidewalk? That's what, that's what we're supposed to base this on. That's what we're trying to present.
All right, so before I open it up to the, to the rest of the board, I guess, just to clarify a little bit in that, while I appreciate Mr. Hanley pointing out which are the key points, I think too, as a reminder for us, I think, but we've also, it's mattered to us, the sidewalks, where they are, and so for example, the difference between a sidewalk on, say, Main Street versus a sidewalk interior to basically a project. I mean, the odds of the town building this sidewalk remains low.
Correct.
The likelihood that that's going to happen, so really the consideration goes back to, did we feel that the sidewalk was important to be put into the project for some reason? You know, safety, whatever. That's one criteria that we use, but also the likelihood that the town would actually be putting that sidewalk in, in helping to determine what the fair fee might be, in addition to some of the things that, that Mr. Hanley pointed out. But I think those things are also things that we've weighed before and, you know, that we need to make sure we're taking into consideration, you know, because this seems to be a floating number, clearly, you know, and, but I do think that that's a realistic fact because Main Street sidewalk that, as we discussed earlier, the likelihood the town's going to build that might be realistic. Whereas maybe something like this is, is less so, so maybe that number floats. And that's, again, it's up to us completely because we make the final determination, but so I don't know that we have a true absolute formula. I think the formula is going to change each time we do this because the project matters. And I, I mean, and that's just my thought, but I think that's how we've looked at it before. So I think that needs to be cobbled together with what Mr. Hanley just reminded us from some of the other things when we reviewed this. Right, so, all right, because, you know, I think we refer to it, we've referred to it in the past, those sidewalks to nowhere.
That's right.
Do we want the sidewalk to nowhere or do we want something in the fund for a sidewalk that may actually be needed somewhere else? And then where does that number fall?
That's, that's the question. Do we want a sidewalk to nowhere or do we want to count sitting with thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars that are not being used for sidewalks? I mean, at the end of the day...
We only can do so, we can only get the money there after that.
I understand that, but, you know, I'll wait for my turn.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll start with Mr. Rada because he's already said.
All right, thank you. And, you know, someone that deals with this on a daily basis, and I, and I know we're miles apart, but the reason we're miles apart, because it's pure numbers. I mean, 1,000 feet, pure cost of asphalt alone, close to $9,500, tax not included, okay? So, and that's not including gravel, labor, I mean, as I stated before, if you can get someone that for $8,000 to install 1,000 feet of sidewalk, we'll put them to work tomorrow for DPW. It's not going to happen. You know what I mean? And I understand Mr. Hardeman is saying, you're talking $62 to $115 a linear foot, and that is valid for the town.
Correct.
For the town. For the town, and I understand that. But at the end of the day, if we're going to, if the board's going to sit here and say, we're going to take $17,000.
Yeah.
What's that going to get us for linear feet? That's 170 feet, you know what I mean, you know, 1,700, I mean, what are we going to get? 750 feet towards a project? That's not a lot of money. And we take, we continue to take all these small little bundles of money and small, smaller bundles of money, but it's not being built. And I understand we're just taking the money in. These projects are not being built. And, you know, I look at it, $17,000 or have sidewalks on a cul-de-sac. I say take the sidewalks on the cul-de-sac because I don't think that $17,000 value is worth it to the town to take that. You mean, it's just too small of an amount of money that's going to get us anything anywhere else in the town. And we have to couple that with 20, 30 different smaller developments to get that 250 feet of sidewalk on Main Street. And, and I know it's a disconnect. I know where the board is continuing to have this battle. I've had this battle in my own professional, you know, day-to-day job. We run into this and there has to, I think the board in the town, we have to come to a standard to say it's going to be, I understand we can't pay prevailing wage, we can't charge the contractor prevailing wage. However, we also can't turn around and tell the contractor that we're going to take $17 a linear foot. You know, that's, you know, 20% of what the actual cost is.
To the town.
Correct.
To the town. And so that's the, that's, that's what we're talking about here, right? Is, is that your bylaw says the cost of construction of such wave sidewalks, not what it would cost the town to build an equal amount. And so like, that's one sticking point that we have here, right? So I appreciate what you're saying, I get it. I understand that, that the town has a different pricing structure. I'm just presenting what, what we think is fair based on, based on the numbers that we have, you know?
I mean, I mean, even at 7, I'm, I'm, I mean, you're, you're having sidewalks installed at $17 a foot? That's a great price for a contractor.
Yeah.
Even with, I mean, that's really good right now.
And, and so like...
Where the market is.
So, so that brings us back, like, we could start to, to bring in prices from contractors. I don't think that really does any good. I don't think that really does any good either, right? Because you're always going to say, well, is this what we want? We want every time we come in to stop bringing pricing in from contractors. You have no way to check that either. So we've done this in the past. This is how we've broken it out. And that's what we provide.
Another thing to take into consideration is the town's going to own that sidewalk. So now not only, okay, you say we built it, so we built it. Well, in twenty years from now, the town's going to have to repair it if it falls into disrepair. Whereas if they take the fee in lieu of, you don't have to worry about sidewalk falling in disrepair twenty years from now and having a burden to the town. And hand over their policy for years was, the sidewalk goes nowhere, I want the money because I know I'm going to be replacing that sidewalk in twenty years. Just something else to take into consideration.
You can say that, but there's a reason you have an O and M budget. And, you know what I mean, from that, I mean, we can get in, we can argue that back and forth. But if a sidewalk's put in properly, you know, designed properly, installed properly, and there's no, in a cul-de-sac like that, it should last more than twenty years. But, I mean, I agree. There is a, we're at that impasse of, you know.
I mean, from our perspective, it would make it a lot easier if we had a number, right? Because then we wouldn't have to go through this because it was too high. Sounds like this is the number, you guys figure it out.
But as the chairman stated, that number's continuing floating because from a town, from a municipality standpoint, that number is floating. And, you know, I mean, if you went out for this project for a thousand feet, just put a small project out like that, you're probably talking a hundred and fifty dollars a linear foot. But if you put out ten thousand linear feet, you may get it down to sixty dollars.
Yeah, but because the town never builds something going in on virgin ground or off the ground, or it has to be done anyways. You're building a sidewalk. You know, I mean, sometimes there's takings involved, and now you're at five hundred dollars. Anyways, this is basically what it comes down to is that the, in the past, the board's like, well, some money's better than no money. You have to decide to the builder, it's seventeen, six, thirty-seven, or the sidewalk goes in. Simple.
You have my vote, but I'm just wondering.
Mr. Delaney.
That was pretty good. You know something? I am more confused now than I was earlier. The thing is, we have put sidewalks in just about every development we would talk about in the last five years that I've been here. Now, the fee in lieu of, for one side of it, has changed from project to project to project. It's never been the same price. It's never been the same, how much per foot or whatever we're allowed to charge in lieu of. I think it's about time, maybe, this opens the question. Where do we get a fee in lieu of, and what is the foot? What are we charging per foot? I don't have a problem with them, you know, I don't agree with the sidewalks going into a development like this. I mean, you know, you only have two people walking down the street. I walked down the street with no sidewalks on it for sixty years since I lived here. The thing is, I think it's about time we sit down and we find out what a price is to put in one foot of sidewalk and then go from that. Then everybody's the same. You know, you've got one guy twenty-five thousand, another guy twenty-two thousand. Nobody knows what the foot price is or what we're charging per foot.
Well, these are the exact, these are accurate numbers. What, you know, Kevin Hardeman's telling us. Those are accurate numbers, what's the cost of the town to install sidewalks. And that's the cost of the town. So we're always going to be back and forth of, no developer's going to want to pay a hundred and fifteen dollars a linear foot for sidewalks. And I understand that. But then again, we're taking that money and it just seems like it's going into this account that nothing's being done with it. And then they come forward, they bring a project to the board, and they request money from us on a project that.
You donated some of our money to the project that's going on in Shawshank Street. And look at that. I mean, that's turned into, I don't know what it's turned into. It's just inconvenienced everybody. Can't even walk down the street.
Yeah.
So where do we go from here? Seventeen thousand dollars? If that's what we agree upon, then that's what we agree upon. But we, somewhere, we have to set a standard, what our prices are. I've talked too much already. Master, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fitzhugh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my opinion, the seventeen thousand dollar figure that you want to submit to the town for the fee in lieu of the sidewalks is, you know, is nothing compared to what the cost is to put them somewhere else. So I don't think it's worth us taking the fee. I just soon see you put them in for the residents that I'd be down there. Seventeen thousand dollars that could go to some other street is minimal, so. My opinion, my suggestion is, put them in and let's deal with this issue again. But like I said, you've already got some of it done already for the most part, right? So you've already done some of the preliminary gravel work and all that stuff. So my opinion is, you know, put it in and be done with it. And that'll be a nice development, put a nice set of sidewalks down there, so.
You know, if I, I can just clarify. We still have a curb, right? So literally, all we're talking about is the extra two feet of gravel plus the ribbon of pavement. That's what we're talking about, right? So we've had some of these other projects, you guys have gone out and you've seen how they've overspread this gravel. It's generally consistent with that. The curb will still be there. And I understand the town's cost, but I, you know, I'm just reading the bylaw. And the bylaw does not say what is the cost of town. It says what is the cost to the developer. And then obviously, you guys have the, you have the fine to say, but that's what it says.
Mr. Fallow.
You know, this will be the third time we've discussed this tonight. What it is, is reinventing the wheel every time. If it's going to change year to year, then somehow we have to get a consultant to tell us what it should cost, an engineer, I mean, what it should cost a developer to put a road in, to put the sidewalk in, to put the curb in. So we'll have all those numbers. So then we have numbers on our side. So we can argue the point from our viewpoint. But right now, we don't have that. So it's guesswork. I can remember the conversation I had with Mr. Hardeman at the Pike House. So a while ago, when we were meeting over there. Did you ever go, have a meeting over there? Good, nice place to have a meeting. It's gone.
It was.
We came to a conclusion at that time that the town could work, would be beneficial if the developer at least paid fifty percent of what the cost, cost at that time for the sidewalk to go in. I'm not even sure where. But I think Mr. Hardeman felt that he was going to get something a lot more than he would get if what we're talking about now, seventeen thousand compared to a hundred and fifteen thousand. It sounds almost ludicrous, but I don't know what to do with this. A, we don't have a consultant. We can't pull numbers out of the sky. We. Mr. Kuco, your numbers feel secure in your mind?
You know, you're never going to be able to get a consultant to do what you're asking for because.
It costs seventeen thousand.
Well, when we come to this point, we've already excavated. We already know that the material that's there, subbase is good. Now, we could take this same project and move it eight hundred feet up the road, and our cost would be twenty-two thousand dollars, or our cost would be twenty-eight thousand dollars.
That's right.
So that's why you can't really have a block enough. So in this particular case, we have good material. We don't have to import, you know, gravel. And we're not mucking out mall and peak. If we were, then our number that we would be offering up would probably be thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. So in this particular case, we have good material. It's a short road. We have a local contractor who is probably doing the work because he doesn't have to mobilize, his equipment is already in town. So to our client, it's eighteen thousand dollars just to add it up. So you can't take this exact same subdivision, move it a half a mile down the road. That number wouldn't go any lower, but it could be high. So it really comes down to, yeah, you know, maybe it's not a lot of money, but it's not, nothing.
The reason I picked on you, Mr. Kuco, was because I knew I would get a number or a definition that I could understand. And it goes back to what I said earlier tonight. The only way you're going to get this done correctly and failing is if you go out to bid annually. But then again, it depends on where it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not even apples and oranges. It's apples and vodkas. You're talking, the town never builds a sidewalk on a virgin street.
No, no.
So.
And when you're building a sidewalk, you're not moving telephone poles. You're not moving mailboxes.
You have to also consider another expense. It's that we don't have detail, or two detail offices that we have out there to set a curving or anything. So you're out on Main Street, you need three, and you need them. It's not, for safety, you need three, right? You need one for each team, and then one for the rest. Some people try to do the two, you need three. So we have one, and we're cutting the street in. But then once we get off Livingston Street, we don't have to have a detail. So this money could probably pay for a few details on sidewalks that the town has to.
There you go.
I'll leave it at that.
So I guess.
It's the truth.
After all, after.
You don't need a block.
Yeah. After all of this, I have the same conclusion. Realize what you have there. Work with what you have there. Do the job there and make a real nice looking project and be done with it.
Absolutely.
Well, of course, when you're on that one, the taking more on the side.
And believe me, I would, I mean, from my perspective, I think taking the money, if it's going to be used in sidewalks are going to be installed, where they're going to be used? To a recreation area, from a park to a ball field. But at the end of the day, seven, that's a hundred and seventy feet. It's not going to get us anywhere. That's, you know, oh, two weeks of details. I mean, I think as Mr. Fallow stated, make the project look great and it'd be a nice selling point for the people that buy the house.
So I'm going to let you.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, it's fine. I'm going to let you guys make the decision.
Well.
Go ahead.
No, we still have.
You're going to jump ahead of me?
Well, yes, because it may be something that you would bring up.
Okay. I'll take credit for it, even if I wasn't now.
What Mr. Handley said at the beginning of the meeting, he said that the fee in lieu on the other side would be back. Here we are.
Right, so we're here, one, to try to modify that waiver to allow no sidewalks, right? Well, under the waiver that we have in place, we have to come back and talk about the portion that we're not building, and what the fee for that is, right? So the seventeen dollars per linear foot is still our best kind of guess on that other side, too. So.
How many feet is that?
That I'm not sure I have right now. Somewhere about half.
So, Mr. Fallow, were you still going? I'm sorry.
How many feet on Livingston Street?
On Livingston Street? Well, so the radiuses, radiuses come, let's say, forty-five, fifty feet, something like that? It's not significant.
It's.
Because you remember that roadway entrance was wide and dope, right? And this really, we have thirty-five foot radiuses in there.
Right, but you're talking about the other side of the street.
Yeah, right, so, right. Well, if we're, if we're transitioning away from this discussion, and now we're going to.
We're reading the tea leaves and seeing that, okay, let's talk about the part we.
Mr. Fallow.
My final question was going to be, you're going to spend seventeen thousand and change one way or the other? Either doing the job yourself or giving the money to the town? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that the number? That's the seventeen, I'll just stay with that.
No, that's for the whole thing. So for the whole thing, for all the sidewalk, right? That's seventeen thousand bucks plus or minus.
So this board should be able to tell you by a vote which way we should want you to do that.
Well, we already have the waiver for the way to sidewalk on one side.
Right.
Okay. So we're looking, we're proposing the same dollar per foot, and you can calculate that out, and you can continue to agree with that.
Right, so just for clarification, you need a number for the other side anyway.
Right.
Absolutely, right. So we need agreement on the unit price.
We didn't have a set number for.
Right.
So we need to give them a number for something tonight on the other side. But this, the seventeen, it would be seventeen twice, correct?
No.
No.
Seventeen is for both sides.
Right, for the entire thing.
So the other side is, what's the breakdown? Is it half?
Probably a little less than half.
I got it somewhere in here.
All right, so will you run your numbers, Mr. Fallow? Were you all set?
Yeah.
All right. So while you're running your numbers, I think the real problem here is, are two starting point problems. One, the town does not have sidewalks where it should. So when we put, when we have these sidewalks in these subdivisions, you know, there is sort of a little bit of a safety, you know, idea in that putting them in would provide a little something to the people. But as pointed out, there's very few people there. I have a hard time thinking of the safety benefit of a sidewalk in, you know, a subdivision when we don't have safe sidewalks in so many parts of the town where you could literally be run over because you can't stay on a sidewalk. And Main Street being the one I think of most, even with the leapfrogging backwards, there's a section where you, there's simply no sidewalk on either side. That's simply dangerous and kind of insane for a town of our size in 2021 that you can't get from one end to the other on Main Street without taking your life in your hands at some point. So to think of the safety benefit to a couple of folks on a subdivision is hard to kind of wrap your head around. The second piece is that we keep trying to attain an absolute number. But the reason that absolute number is so difficult is because we're talking about sometimes a sidewalk to nowhere. Like, if we had sidewalks everywhere, we should have them. Then having these done on every subdivision would make sense because eventually they link up to something. But we don't have that. So we end up potentially having sidewalks that are barely of any use somewhere. And the number for that, in terms of benefit to the town, when you factor in things like future repair or, you know, safety, all those factors, is going to change the number for maybe this kind of project versus a Main Street project. So I think that's one of our, the sort of the difficulties. We're looking for an absolute, but, and as Mr. Kuco pointed out tonight, even that number is going to float beyond the things I just mentioned just on where in town you're putting it in. Like he said, you move up the road, the price starts going up maybe. You go down the road, maybe the price starts going down. I don't know, but, so it's always a floating number. And that's, I think that's part of our problem in trying to attain this absolute number that we tell everybody, okay, it's twenty-five dollars. Just making it up. But you know what I mean? That's, you know, or do we just simply find the median of between, you know, a Main Street project and a side street project? Pick the number, say it's this dollar amount. Otherwise, build it even though we don't think it's going to really benefit anybody really, or pay us the money. And I'm not at that point yet. I think the way we do it, even though it's a little irritating and difficult, I think trying to come up with a number that is beneficial enough to the town when taking into all those factors, because I think we do have to weigh them all. And I guess it's, you know, it's left up to us, so I guess it is our job to try and weigh them all on each separate project and say, it's this amount for this project. Pay it, don't pay it, and then, or build the sidewalk, even if we think maybe we're not going to, you know, it's not really a benefit. But that's going to ultimately be down to the petitioner's decision at that point.
So we run into one project that.
So we run into one project that is back here today that in two thousand in just nine short years ago project was approved and no sidewalks and we're back here today saying well if we just at prices nine years ago
Right.
Then it wouldn't even be a point now we'd have that continuation and I think we have to look at it means the board has to look at and say okay the value is not there for us because what we intended that value to be used for is expansion of sidewalks throughout town it's not happening so let's just get sidewalks where we can and whether it be through complete streets chapter ninety uh you know safer to school or any other various town funding then we connect the dots but now we're just saying uh it's it's basically it comes down it's a I don't know popularity what sidewalks get done we we have a list and it gets changed and then priorities change on the list you know as I said in our last sidewalk meeting the priority should be from our schools and from our recreation areas and then we work out to the center of town and unfortunately that's not what's happening so my opinion is just one one voice is let's start putting those dots on the map and sooner or later it's gonna be later but those dots will be connected through other other means.
So to answer your question that was in there before if I'm reading the tea leaves correctly we would say no waiver for the sidewalk on the other side and if we could go with the seventeen dollars a foot that we demonstrated we could construct it for you'd get nine thousand forty-four dollars and we build the other sidewalk.
So for the already waived sidewalk it would be nine thousand would you say forty-four using your number for the sidewalk we've already waived?
Yeah.
Correct.
And we build
The sidewalk that we were discussing earlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's because I'm
So let me let me just I'll just poll it it'd be simpler faster.
So are you including Livingston Street as well?
There's really not I mean it's
We are.
Mr Patai yeah because it's really those flares on there so it would be um the which side would we build it which side?
Uh the bottom of the road.
So did we waive Livingston Street or not?
Well
No we waived the other side of the
It's just a little
Right.
What section would we be available building up there?
As part of Livingston Street though there are tiptowns ADA compliant tiptowns at the ends.
Do it have to be it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Because you know the intent is at some point and you know my opinion is for the eighty
Which side?
The bottom.
I mean no other part of Livingston Street is paved so ludicrous to do just that.
You can see up there where it shows like a stop sign
Yeah.
So there's a section there of sidewalk at Livingston the roundy right there.
Yeah.
And then there's a section over here
Comes all the way down.
All the way down that's what would be built.
Right yeah.
Okay alright so let me just poll it so i- if I'm if again I guess I'll use Mr Cuco's terms the tea leaves are saying that we're not gonna take the seventeen for waiving both sides so with that in mind that means one side of the sidewalk is going to going to be paved we previously waived the other side so we just need a number for that so at that point the seventeen what is it is it se- seventeen foot price for the previously waived sidewalk are you fine with that Mr Delaney?
I am.
Yeah.
Mr Rada?
I am with one stipulation.
Mm-hmm.
I think next project that comes in we need a dollar value before anything's waived because if I was gonna wave a sidewalk for seventeen dollars a linear foot I wouldn't have waived it.
It's the other side.
The other side.
Yeah me neither.
I we need this number because I don't know what that number is and we're waving something and we don't know what we're waving.
Okay so that'll be our own decision this time from now on we'll get we'll decide this stuff upfront during the during the decision making alright Mr Fala you all right with this?
Yes.
Alright what was the total?
Seventeen thousand oh nine hundred.
I think it's nine thousand forty-four.
And do we how many do we have a foot this number?
Five hundred and thirty-two feet.
Alright so provided the five hundred and thirty-two feet is correct and the seventeen dollars gets you to nine thousand forty-four provided those numbers are correct.
I think it's in the previous email.
Yeah I
And what I'm saying is it's gonna be seventeen dollars per if it turns out that your number is wrong and it goes up then the number's gonna go up but we'll make the 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 decision based on those numbers.
So Mr Johnson we're gonna just do the left side right coming around and all the way down one side.
Right side.
Right the right
Lower side. And how many linear feet on the opposite side?
That's the That's the five thirty-two
Five thirty-two that they just gave us the number.
So we're gonna build this
Yep.
Lower side
Mm-hmm.
And then it terminates here.
Yep.
Okay and then we're gonna provide this flare right here just to connect the furniture.
Twenty feet fifteen eighteen feet.
Right so the portion that we're not building is around
Mm-hmm.
This remaining portion.
Mm-hmm and that gets us to the nine thousand forty-four
Yeah.
Based on those numbers okay so then what we need here is if we're still treating it as a non substantial because we didn't deal with it before.
Correct.
Okay so alright.
We need a motion to
So take a mo- first a motion what's that?
If you aren't waving sidewalk on the other side I'm not sure you have to make the non substantial determination because we had to come back to you anyway to
To get the number.
For the north side.
So what are we gonna call that are we just making a motion to determine the amount for the sidewalk?
We withdraw the non substantial determination and I mean I
But I need but we need to give you the answer for the other side so what's the process for that because we had you guys come back well not you guys but we've had people come back a few times to get this out of the way I don't know what we're calling it.
It it I would think it's just to accept the do you accept the 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 board to accept the seventeen dollars per linear foot for the X number of linear feet that is not being built and that's determined of the nine thousand forty-four dollars.
So then as for okay so then we'll do this as two separate things then so then I guess I'll accept a motion to not find this a non substantial change because that's what we're doing correct?
Correct.
Okay so I have a motion made do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed motion carries now as to clarifying the outstanding issue on the waived portion of this the previously waived portion of the sidewalk from our previous hearings that we use this as a uh take a motion to determine the fee in lieu for the waived side which will be at seventeen dollars per linear what is it linear foot?
Mm-hmm.
Linear foot um the current number being uh nine thousand forty-four dollars based on five hundred
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two feet.
Right.
Um if those numbers change they'll be amended as necessary but that's the rate and the numbers as we know it now so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion for that a second motion made in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarifies that alright yeah we gotta
We're gonna get to the bottom of it.
And don't come back.
Yeah I
Gotta figure this out and we put ourselves partly in this position because we started getting the numbers way
We're gonna a hundred dollars out of whack.
You should have a number before the committee.
Yeah we gotta we gotta deal with this but
Whatever.
Let's get off the clock.
So let's
They should have a number before the committee.
No but we'll we'll start dealing with that going forward let's move on.
Yeah.
So we got old business anybody got your old business?
No.
Nope.
Alright any new business?
No.
Alright I have one issue of new business so at our hearing for the bylaw subcommittee we had a discussion about the process of moving forward uh there was a request from the committee to sort of poll the planning board because and just to remind everybody this process is a little bit different than normal the the only way that the bylaw zoning bylaw can be brought back at the next town meeting or actually brought back at any point but the aim is for the next town meeting the planning board would hold its normal hearing process only this time it wouldn't just be a recommendation where normally if we make a recommendation even if we all said no it would still go to town meeting the difference here is is that it requires a majority of the board to endorse sending it to town meeting this time or it won't go so it's a little bit different we're we're a little bit different of a gatekeeper this time than normal so the request was to find out if at present the feeling amongst the board members is that this is a non starter and it really doesn't matter what the committee does if when it gets here the board members aren't gonna support it no matter how it looks we might as well tell the subcommittee now and they can start working or if people haven't made up their minds and are gonna wait and see what comes in they'd like to know that but they're just trying to get a feel from the board about where people stand right now because if the majority of the board right now says it doesn't matter what you send we're not supporting it the process is pretty much done at least for now so that's what they're asking because they don't wanna go through all the work which is reasonable to to just find out that it didn't matter what they did or we did because we're both on it like you know that's sort of the the request so I guess it's go around the room Mr Rada?
Yeah thank you Mr Chair I I think you know not knowing what tweaks or modifications that is intended by the board I think that's a tough
Tough question.
Tough question to answer you know it's the same thing that we just
Mr Fala and I were sort of put in the same position in the meeting where they're asking us well are you gonna support it and I think I think we said the same thing but I know I said basically I can't tell you that answer right now but I won't say that it's dead on arrival I'm saying I don't know until I see the final project I think they're also trying to get a feel on does anybody feel like it doesn't matter like no matter what they send you don't feel comfortable putting it back out to town meeting if that's how you feel that's one answer if the second answer is I don't know yet that's fine but I think those are two answers they're they're asking so the first part is is it is it does it not matter what they send forward would you not support it?
No I think I would support it I obviously
Okay.
Like to see what it is but also a question that has been brought up is what happened at the last town meeting is if the zoning article zoning changes brought up and there are one two three modifications and then it becomes the article that we did and ultimately turns into what we've had the last time.
So I think that's where the question of the two different pieces the one where you know you 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 you're not saying that changes or tweaks in self kill it but whether you feel comfortable putting another zoning article before town meeting I guess again.
Well I think I'm feel comfortable in putting it in front of town meeting but I think I'm concerned of the individuals coming in and already have their modifications the night of the meeting and may not have may not understand the ramification of the modification.
And that's the way we've been banging around in the meeting.
That's right because if I can say this correctly we don't know what's gonna happen when town meeting starts but we have to make our determination based on what the zoning bylaw subcommittee does to just before town meeting to support it.
Mm-hmm.
Once we support that we go with it.
Sure.
If town meeting tears it apart it's up to them.
Sure.
But we have to if we're gonna support it we have to support it.
I I think we need to look at it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr Fala?
You heard me say it?
Yep. Mr Delaney?
No.
Mr Stein?
I'm willing to support it unless there's a lot of major changes that we haven't had a time to look at so I mean I don't see that happening I would like to support the package as is and that's our version and that's what we go with so I wouldn't have a problem supporting it along those conditions.
And I see this in the meeting my my concern is at least at present I'm unclear on on how I feel about it being brought back up period just because town meeting made a decision we just don't know you know and would we you know with town meeting having made its decision the at the last town meeting is leaving what we have alone for the two years you know is it a cooling off period is it you know before you get back to it I don't know I still don't know I mean I haven't said that I don't support I you know I thought this should have passed the last time you know I mean that's how I felt I thought we needed it um but seeing how what happened at town meeting it makes me fearful of what could happen again and you know how many app how many bites at the apple do we have to throw back
That's what we're gonna yeah we're gonna get that
You know what I mean that we get something that's right because what happens if it does get torn up at town meeting a lot of us feel like well now it's a worse product are we then gonna bring back another zoning article to try and fix what we think town meeting may have made a mistake with then
Yeah.
Or are people just gonna live with it?
Well you'd also hate to have it torn up and passed.
That's what I mean that's my biggest fear so I mean are we better off leaving well enough alone I don't know um and that's where I like I don't feel like it's dead on arrival meaning just because they're making some tweaks to it that I feel like I can't support it I don't know yet I don't know what the tweaks are I know the other night we really made no change to one issue we basically just sent it forward as it was that's fine so obviously I supported it last time we made no change so I don't I have no problem but I don't know what's gonna happen with the other issues so I won't know that portion until we get to the end once we make changes or don't make changes um that's on that part I still remain with the concern that's separate from that of should it go forward I don't know.
So I I think if we we have to make a decision my theory is we have to hope that it's going to be done in a manner that it would be better than it was two years ago and we can with clear conscience know that we did our best part to bring it forth to town meeting to get a majority to get a super majority vote if we don't we did our best.
Right so this is the one thing I'll say so what I got out of what we just discussed tonight is what I would or what we can take back to uh the zoning bylaw committee is that none of the board members feel like it is dead on arrival period.
Correct.
Okay none of us can commit yet to supporting it because we don't know what it is and we won't be able to make that decision until they're done and then it comes to us for our hearing but we come we at least take it in open minded until then.
Absolutely.
That feel fair?
Yep.
But I would add one thing and this comes off of what you just said Mr Fala I don't think it's just us and I wish I had thought of this the other night we were at the bylaw subcommittee they asked us to commit to a certain level of support or give some idea of where we stand I feel that the board of selectmen need to do the same thing I'd like to know where they stand and where they plan on standing.
Well let's put that out Steve.
Well that's why I'm asking because I think
He's positive.
I think that the the how do I wanna put this having the board of selectmen committed to supporting in the same way that they're asking us to is not unreasonable because I think there's a great deal of the result from the last town meeting because you know there may be some distrust of our board but not enough from the board of selectmen supporting what was put forward
Right.
I think may have harmed the outcome and if we're gonna have the same problem again this time where it's just us and maybe the committee and maybe only some of the committee or whatever being the ones who are gonna get behind this then
It won't
I don't think it's any more useful to have us commit to saying we have an open mind and that would likely you know if we feel like it's good we'll support it if we're not gonna get the same level of buy-in from another stakeholder in this you know the one who actually started this whole process.
Yep.
So I think I don't know how we go about that I don't know if we just wait till we go back or if
For Stephen.
You know I just feel like they should they should do the same thing they're asking us to do.
Yep Stephen will be at our next meeting.
So.
That's the second right is it?
Yeah it's coming up soon I think.
Yeah.
About the second.
Yeah so okay so but are the board members
Yeah.
In agreement with asking for that?
Sure.
Okay alright so with that uh no correspondence in the package?
No.
Motion adjourned.
A motion to adjourn do I have a second motion made in second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed motion carries good evening and thank you.